And we did see a significant number of people that were put into the wrong funding source. So that may be a funding source of less than they should have been. The department did throughout the year work diligently to make sure people were transitioned, but they had asked if there were any data sets we could share to show the financial impact. So the CMHA is working with us on that effort. I will say that some of the advocacy efforts were [inaudible] and we are no longer muted. The next topic we wanted to talk about, advocacy for DCW wages has been very prominent in our county for the last year or so. One of the things that was new for us, we received a letter. Can you advance this slide, please?
Next slide.
Thank you. We received a letter from the legal office representing the Oakland Provider Alliance. It was a little different for us because the letter was explaining, there's going to be a new minimum wage in the state of Michigan next year. It goes up to 1248.
All right, go ahead.
Okay. So as of October 1st, we did transition transportation services for the IDD network back into OCHN, and we were able to secure transportation for every one of the original 2,300 individuals with the exception of 10 people. Two individuals were new to the network. The others had very unique transportation needs that required some alternative solutions. As of November 4th, transportation has been secured for all but four individuals. Of those four, one person is new to the network. We continue to prioritizing meeting those transportation needs. There have been some concerns expressed about OCHN discontinuing a $1,000 transportation stipend that has previously been given to the specialized residential providers. This was instituted in 2018 when those contracts were brought into OCHN from the core providers. What was that? Please advance the slide.
Please advance the slide.
Thank you. Oh, no, back one. Yes, please. Thank you. So according to the Michigan Medicaid Provider Manual, as the PIHP, we are responsible for transportation to and from an individual's place of residence for that individual to participate in a state plan, the have support waiver, and additional 1915 I-SPAS service on an approved day program site. Approved day program site. Under the new transportation billing process, our specialized residential providers can bill for Medicaid vocational and supported employment transportation services. This Medicaid billing process is what replaces that $1,000 stipend. So this was implemented as a different way to bill. So that money is not going anywhere. We are not decreasing our transportation budget, our overall budget. It's a different way to bill for those individualized services within those. Next slide, please. Okay. We also have updated and listened to some feedback that we have gotten, and there are some new standardized base rates. These were augmented by modifiers for a higher level of medical necessity as identified by the individual's plan of service. And I think that's really important is being individualized within the IPOs. We have ambulatory modifier rates that are $33 and $36. The individual plan of service guides the mileage for community living services. It's paid on a per-person basis, including groups of individuals that are traveling to and from locations. So it is still per person. The enhanced mileage rate is available for individuals who use wheelchairs. And that base mileage rate, the federal rate is 67 cents per mile, and our enhanced mileage rate is double that federal rate of $1.34.
I just want to add quickly too. So the information we're sharing, much of it is in the transportation FAQ, which we continue to update and we have been distributing since July. So we are working diligently to ensure that the people we serve have factual information. And we want to encourage people to advocate, but we want to advocate on data and facts and really stand away and step away from fear. And the more we can look at the factual information that we continue to share, the more, I think, meaningful conversations we can have with families.
Does anybody have any questions at this time? Okay. Christine, Trish, thank you very much.
Thank you. My hands up.
So at this time, we will proceed with public comment. Again, as I mentioned, when you come to the podium, please state your name, and also please limit your comments to three minutes so everyone has time to address us this evening. So the first person I have signed up is Elaine Khan. Is Elaine here? Oh, there you are. Is the red light on? Okay. Put your, yeah. And just so everybody knows, get a lean a little bit to the mic, just so everyone can hear. Thank you.
Okay, so I'm Elaine Khan, and I am the guardian of my oldest brother. He currently lives in a JARQ home, a 24/7, fully licensed home. And I was notified a few weeks ago about some changes in funding that I wanted to address to you. It directly impacts my brother, Steven. The reimbursement rates, not just for staffing and transportation, affects his well-being, the changes, potentially his safety. He likes to go out in the community. He doesn't go to work, so I'm not sure how Medicaid will reimburse his specific interest. He doesn't go to a work program or a day program, but he goes out, he wants to join, I don't know, let's say it's a birthday party at one of the other homes, go on outings. He really enjoys those things. And my understanding is that that wouldn't be reimbursed or billable with these new changes. So it's unlikely he's going to want to go to a work program or a day program. He's 72 years old. He likes what he likes. And it's distressful to me to think about his upcoming future if he's not able to engage in the community because of transportation costs not being available for him. He currently lives in a home with five other people, men, who have higher needs than he does. Steven is very observant of how other people are being treated. I was told that there will be a change in reimbursement for staffing, scheduling, from a 2-2-2 morning, afternoon, and night to a 1-2-1 ratio. And a good number of his roommates or housemates require assistance, even though Steven does not.
Excuse me, Elaine?
Oh, my three minutes?
Is there a Sarah Harris in the room? Yeah, yeah. If you could step out, you've been requested to assist someone. I apologize.
Oh, it's okay. I thought my three minutes were
No, no, no.
Okay. So my concern about his safety is he could be a fall risk. He's mobile. He doesn't require assistance, but his housemates do. And I just want to tell you, the effort it took to get a placement for Steven, it was a lot, and it's been nothing but a blessing. He is thriving in the situation he is in. And to put that at jeopardy, to put his well-being in jeopardy, to put his accessibility to the community in jeopardy, my request to the board is that you consider the outcomes on individuals such as Steven and his quality of life and his safety. So I don't know all the details about the billing and how it can be moved around in the IPOs and da-da-da-da. I have reached out to his support coordinator, and she's also kind of throwing her hands up at this point. But I'm really genuinely asking you to keep doing what they do best for people like Steven and to support them, not to make the hurdles and the barriers. They are already there, and that the services he has right now, I would greatly, as his sister, as his loved one, would really appreciate to see those protected.
Thank you.
Hi there.
Hi.
My name is Dana Leahy, and I'm the Director of Programs for Pathlight Community Services. We were formerly Sennott Residential Services. I have been working as a supervisor for this agency in one form or another since June of 1998. We currently contract with OCHN, Livingston, Lenawee, Jackson, and Washtenaw Counties to provide specialized residential services on behalf of each of these entities. I am here today in concert and solidarity with the provider network that has been taking care of the Oakland Community Health Network clients on behalf of the government that can no longer afford to provide the services that they are mandated to provide and have not been able to for a very long time. As a nonprofit employee, I understand my role as a proxy government worker for less. I understand the salary, the benefits, and retirement plans are too much to bear for the government that is not able to convince their community at large that taking care of the most vulnerable amongst us might actually cost real money. And we should be able to pay the staff that do this work on their behalf a wage that allows them to only work one job and to live in the community that they work in. We struggle every day to hire staff to take care of your clients and residents in areas like Royal Oak, Clarkston, and Southfield. The people who live in these areas have very little interest in doing this work. Who can blame them? The wage doesn't even come close to allowing them to afford to live where they do. Instead, we advertise in Flint. These are your real heroes. The staff who live in one of the most financially depressed area of the state and whose water that we as a state government, due to bad decision-making, was poisoned. Those are your real heroes. They are willing to drive and to do this work for you on your behalf. They did it through the pandemic, while I suspect the majority of the people in this room who are making six figures went home to work for a couple of years. I hear that was very tough. The contract you have set out with the reduced rates for the upcoming year is unacceptable. There is no sufficient reasoning to reduce the rate when, as a result of the pandemic, combined with capitalism greed, everything we do and everything we buy as a community costs more than it did a year ago. The cost of living is not going down, and just because the bulk of the people who do these jobs for you are the working poor does not mean that they are not paying attention. I propose that this is not a this-year problem as much as it's an every-year problem, where the inequity of what the people in this building are worth versus what the people who do this everyday work for you are worth. I'm not usually a big fan of shame as a motivator of behavior, but in this case, I feel it may fit. I personally am feeling a lot of shame for being a cog in the wheel of underfunding the community mental health system. My personal beliefs are that everyone does indeed matter. They matter equally, whether or not they have a developmental disability, or a mental illness, or a substance abuse disorder. Trying to parse out just how little we have to spend in order to take care of those who need us the most is antithetical to the values that I hold. And I accept that doing this work for as long as I have, for as little money as I have, I have been part of the problem as well. I accept my faults in this, and I hope you do the same. Thank you.
Thank you. Carol Cassander.
It's Cassander, and it's
Thank you for correcting me. I'm not always the best with last names, but I'm trying.
Good for you for trying. So my name is Carol Cassander. I live in Oak Park, Michigan. My son Robbie has Angelman Syndrome, which is a deletion on one of the long arms of the 15th chromosome. It means that he is dependent on others for everything except for hugging and kissing. He does that very well on his own. In the last few years, he's had to have a feeding tube inserted because the tube, the food was going into his lungs as opposed to his stomach. So I have two major concerns, and one is certainly transportation. If he's supposed to be part of the community and not just in the community, then he needs a reimbursement rate that's more than a reimbursement rate for a car. He's a wheelchair user and requires a van. So while I might get reimbursed from work at 67 cents a mile, I drive a little Buick Encore. I can't put him in my car because the wheelchair doesn't collapse. The other concern I have is he's had overnight staffing and enhanced staffing at home, and the reason for that is he was pulling out the tube on a regular basis, and Henry Ford Hospital recognizes him. Oh, Robbie's here again. And I would hate to see his enhanced staffing be repealed. It would not be in his best interest at all. I echo everyone in being grateful to the workers who provide the day-to-day services for the people that we serve. I wish that they could make a living and not have to have more than one job. And I would like to make sure that the rules and regulations of the IPOs would also help for him to be in the community, part of the community, and not just getting a ride to and from his day program. It doesn't include his visits to the medical doctor, and it certainly doesn't include any emergency room visits that he can make doing his own car. I think our commitment to the people who are most vulnerable in our area and in the world, really, is really what is a testament to how we treat the most vulnerable. And if we're not taking care of those, we're really not taking care of anybody. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Carol. Next, if I have this right, Sarah Ungary?
Me?
Yes.
Hi.
Hello, Sarah. Welcome.
I need some help with, I want to move into a group home. I need to help pay for that. Need help pay for that.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. The next name I have, I believe, is Braca. Is that okay? I made somebody happy today. Hello, Braca. Welcome.
Hi.
Hello, Sarah. Welcome.
I need some help with, I want to move into a group home. I need to help pay for that. Need help pay for that.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. The next name I have, I believe, is Braca. Is that okay? I made somebody happy today. Hello, Braca. Welcome.
Hi. This year, I'm having a birthday, and I'm 21. And I'm moving to the house with my friends, and we're going to have a good time, and we're going to have more friends at the house I'm moving to. And it's going to be Chloe, me, Sarah, Mira, and we're going to have other people to move to home with me and my friends. And happy, I'm excited, truly. I've been here with people on the fence, and I'm really excited to have you this year. And I'm having a birthday, it's 21. My mother is 71 years old. Thank you.
Did she do a cartwheel? All right, well, that is a first. A cartwheel. Thank you, Braca. Next is Michael Higgs.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Michael Higgs. I'm the Executive Director of Family Living Center, a legacy provider of licensed group homes in Oakland County, and as well, a co-chair of the Oakland Provider Alliance. I'm here with Lynn McGinnity, Executive Director of New Gateways, a skill-building program, and co-chair of the Oakland Provider Alliance. The Provider Alliance represents a membership of 27 IDD service providers here in Oakland County that serve well over 1,000 people. We are here, along with some of our peers, people served, families, guardians, support coordinators in the media, to bring your attention to the financial stress, disorder, risk, and potential service failure brought to bear on providers due to the rates for service recently handed down to us via fiscal year '25 OCHN residential and vocational contracts. I'm going to cede the rest of my time to Lynn McGinnity.
As previously communicated to OCHN, MDHHS, and to this Board of Directors on numerous occasions over the past two years, the IDD network in Oakland County has become severely underfunded, which results in an unstable and unsustainable provider network. This puts vulnerable and medically fragile citizens of this county at risk. It is your duty to oversee that adequate, safe, sustainable, and fair service delivery is available to the IDD community. I plead to you again to review your current residential and vocational rates in Oakland County as soon as possible to prevent further disruption for people served.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Shandel Braunstein.
Thank you. I'm Shandel Braunstein. I am the CEO of JARQ, and incredibly proud that we have a lot of folks in the room tonight. So we wanted you to know, right, we're people with needs and faces and unique, and felt it was really important that you be able to meet us. So I do agree with what Christine said. It's data, right? Follow the data. It's very difficult to become embroiled in emotions, right, and fear and anxiety. So my comments tonight actually are completely centered on data. So when the providers were told that in our specialized residential settings, we would be unbundling transportation, our understanding was that we would be able to bill for both transportation to and from day program, which for my community, again, many of us are here, actually represents less than a third of the people that we serve in specialized residential go to day program. We have a lot of older adults who are retired, and again, others who have, for a variety of reasons, not made the choice to attend a formal vocational program. So not only would we be able to bill for day program, but we would further be able to bill for community living supports activities. One of the "we's," and there are many, that we feel we stand out as a provider, is in making sure that people are not on the sidelines. We're here tonight because we're part of community. In specialized residential settings, because the community living supports are coded under H2016 and not 2015, it is impossible to bill for community living support transportation. It is, and again, we were back and forth, and staff was very helpful and responsive in confirming this. It is included in the rates. So, and I am actually an operations finance person by education and background, working in human service. What that means, when you back out the math, is that the amount of transportation left in those rates for community living supports, which includes all of my wheelchair-accessible vans being here tonight, so that the people that we serve who chose to be here, and not all of our folks are here, not everyone made that choice, anyone who wanted to be here is here, are unfunded for that, because the amount left comes to a total of $250 a month, which equates to $1.36 per person per day. I'm sure that wasn't the intention, but when we talk about the ability to bill transportation for services approved in the IPOs, there is no mechanism to do that in specialized residential, again, because all specialized residential bills, H2016 for CLS. So again, if this committee, if the board, if leadership at OCHN could look into that, I would hate, again, at Steve's home, six gentlemen who do not go to day program. And I could go on and on with the number of people in this room who do not go to day program. There is no way for them to bill the funding that they lost. The second point I'd like to make is a clarification, again, on the earlier comments, deputized by some of my colleagues in the room, in regards to our concern about the change in the minimum wage. OCHN sent to its providers a document which indicated a mandatory wage floor, which is based on the state minimum wage plus the mandated legislative pass-throughs, which at this time, with the most recent pass-through, comes to $14.68. Our question wasn't, why should we have to pay minimum wage? But based on that methodology, when the minimum wage changes in February, right, January and February of 2025, the floor wage per the document that was distributed to us would change, changing it to well over $16. And our question wasn't, can we lower wages? We all want to pay more. We need to pay more. And again, I'll stick to the data, but is, what would happen then to that floor wage? And will funding be provided to us so that we can continue to pay the state mandated minimum wage plus the legislative-approved pass-throughs? I thank you for your time and for the work that everyone's doing, and I'm sure if we continue to work together, we can resolve these issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Rick Herman?
Yep. Did a pretty good job on that one.
Thank you.
My name is Richard Herman. I am pretty much a lifelong Oakland County resident. I kind of feel like I'm a pretty committed community volunteer. And if I was a provider, I would stand up right now and say one word and then sit down. I would ditto what Shandel Braunstein had just said.
So, and I am actually an operations finance person by education and background, working in human service. What that means, when you back out the math, is that the amount of transportation left in those rates for community living supports, which includes all of my wheelchair accessible vans being here tonight, so that the people that we serve who chose to be here, and not all of our folks are here, not everyone made that choice, anyone who wanted to be here is here, are unfunded for that because the amount left comes to a total of $250 a month, which equates to $1.36 per person per day. I'm sure that wasn't the intention, but when we talk about the ability to bill transportation for services approved in the IPOs, there is no mechanism to do that in specialized residential, again, because all specialized residential bills, H2016 for CLS. So, again, if this committee, if the board, if leadership at OCHN could look into that, I would hate, again, at Steve's home, six gentlemen who do not go to day program. And I could go on and on with the number of people in this room who do not go to day program. There is no way for them to bill the funding that they lost. The second point I'd like to make is a clarification, again, on the earlier comments deputized by some of my colleagues in the room in regards to our concern about the change in the minimum wage. OCHN sent to its providers a document which indicated a mandatory wage floor, which is based on the state minimum wage plus the mandated legislative pass-throughs, which at this time, with the most recent pass-through, comes to $14.68. Our question wasn't, why should we have to pay minimum wage? But based on that methodology, when the minimum wage changes in February, right, January and February of 2025, the floor wage per the document that was distributed to us would change, changing it to well over $16. And our question wasn't, can we lower wages? We all want to pay more, we need to pay more. And, again, I'll stick to the data, but is, what would happen then to that floor wage? And will funding be provided to us so that we can continue to pay the state mandated minimum wage plus the legislative approved pass-throughs? I thank you for your time and for the work that everyone's doing. And I'm sure if we continue to work together, we can resolve these issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Rick Herman?
Did a pretty good job on that one.
Thank you.
My name is Richard Herman. I am pretty much a lifelong Oakland County resident. I kinda feel like I'm a pretty committed community volunteer. And if I was a provider, I would stand up right now and say one word and then sit down. I would ditto what Shandel Bronstein had just said. But I'm not here as a provider. I'm here as a family member. I am the brother of an aging, developmentally disabled adult, Michael Herman. And although he doesn't admit that very much, that I'm his brother, but without going into the details of your transportation formula, transportation is really important to me because it's really important to him. I do know that the formula does not ensure that more money gets spent on transportation. When you remove 75% of the transportation stipend and then indicate to the providers that they can only bill going to and from day programs, it doesn't ensure more money gets to that transportation program. So, I'm not a mathematician by trade, but I do know that numbers don't lie. I'm smart enough to be able to add and subtract and multiply, and certain each of you are as well. And if you've been made aware of this formula, you know that it leaves less than $40 a month for my brother to go where he needs to go and where he wants to go. And that just doesn't work. That's not what the law says. And morally, it's not what should happen. Your mission to which you opine is to ensure people like my brother get what they need. You say you are equitable to all providers. I believe that you are, thinking that. But actions do speak louder than words. Please do not continue with this formula. You are forcing providers who are already working on the margins to go into debt when they have to provide the same services as they have on September 30th with less money. Hopefully, these providers will not just keep these folks at home. Hopefully, they will still transport them. What I don't know is how you or we think that they're gonna pay for that. They can't. And if you disagree with my logic or my mathematical prowess, please let me know because I just don't get it. Thank you, folks. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Lay Unger? Pass? Okay, thank you. Randall Mio? M E O? M E O? It looks like H O or N O? Oh, we have, okay, thank you.
Hi, M E O N O, three little words.
Mio, okay.
Nobody does it right.
Good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I am Randall Mio. My daughter is Karen, age 51, happy, loving young lady. She's severely mentally impaired. She lives in a group home near our home and attends a community activity program during the week. My wife and I have obviously been involved in the special needs system for 45-plus years. What brings me here today and what is most troubling is current issues involving Oakland Community Health Network. I believe your responsibility, both morally and legally, is to serve the mentally and physically challenged community. It is your obligation and priority and perhaps your only priority. It is my belief that OCHN has lost that focus and responsibility. I could talk at length about ongoing struggles about transportation, rates, funding, challenges with communication with providers to have meaningful discussions with you. Your actions and decisions seem to be related more to finances and not to people. Your decision to assume responsibility for new areas, for instance, transportation, seemed to deal with how your actions will result in cost savings and not how they will make lives better. It is my hope that as you meet and plan and interact with organizations that are providing services directly to the special needs people, that you will be thinking about my daughter and all the other individuals that you are responsible for rather than thinking about the numbers in your budget. Thank you.
Thank you. That completes the individuals who signed up. But at this time, if there is anyone else who wishes to address the board, please raise your hand. And when recognized, please come to the speaking area. And, again, please leave your comments to three minutes and please state your name and where you're from. And, yes?
Good evening. My name is Rosemary Rangy. I'm the mother and guardian of a 45-year-old individual who lives in a group home in Clarkston. I've been in Oakland County for nearly 50 years and my son has received services for pretty much a long period of time. He left home at an early age. At 14, his behaviors were becoming difficult to manage at home. And the only solution that was offered to me was have him hospitalized. And at that time, he was admitted into Fairlawn Psychiatric, Children's Psychiatric Unit, and attended his school program at Wing Lake. After two years, Governor Engler decided to close the program. And so, at age 16, he was then, his father was very unaccepting of his diagnosis of being severely disabled and felt that he could not return home because nothing had improved. And so, my son was waved into his first group home. From that group home, he probably went to three different group homes, all of which he was victim to elopement. He was running on Rochester Road. He wasn't supervised. It was a very difficult time as a parent, as you can imagine. But no other services were really offered. We came across a provider when he was 24, Progressive Lifestyle. And he was, has been and continues to be in a home that is supported by that organization to this day. As I look around the room, I see a lot of people of my age bracket. And I want to remind the board, we are probably the first generation of parents who opted to try to keep their children home. My case was unusual that he left so early. But there are parents who have spent their whole life raising their child and looking out for the best of them, having them at home. I did work for Mork for probably five years as a parent support partner. I was certified by the state to meet with families because they're just overwhelmed by all the needs and demands of having a child with special needs. At this point, you know, it's very concerning what is being proposed with the cuts for transportation and in the last couple of years to programs like vocational programs. As you are all well aware, so many of the programs have actually had to close their doors because of lack of sufficient funding. And that truly was just unacceptable. That was a place that individuals could go, socialize, get some vocational training, be out in the community, and those doors were shut. And there are very few programs. Fortunately, as part of my advocacy efforts, I had my local representative in Clarkston at the time visit a group home and visit a program, a vocational program, which was New Gateways. Highly recognized. At that time, it was at 15 in Maple and was moving to Waterford. And once I saw that program and how well it was run, I immediately put my son on the list to be accepted there. And the thought of him not having a program to go to, this gives him so much meaning in his day. He is not really able to do a whole lot, but he really enjoys going out for van rides. And, you know, this is just huge for him. So, I implore you to consider your decision-making and financial plan carefully. I also think, you know, we all are very aware here in Oakland County, the mental health crisis with suicides and shootings. And that all hit the newspaper. And that was, you know, everybody had a lot of empathy and sympathy for those individuals and family and the loss of life. I don't want to see that the IDD population overlooked any longer. We have a voice. And you can obviously see there are some very committed parents here. But, you know, there's that aging process. When people get to a certain age, family members pass. And, you know, we leave this as a legacy to siblings, my daughters, to take over, to look over their brother. And that's a huge responsibility. But just knowing that he has a place to go that he really loves and enjoys and being able to get out in the community is just so, so very important. So, I thank you for your time and listening to my comments.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Yes.
Hi.
Hello.
I'm Danielle. Danielle Gray. I am a home manager for two houses. I work for JARQ. We've heard from family members. We heard from CEO, but we haven't heard from us, the workers, the ones that are there day in and day out, taking care of everyone with physical and intellectual disabilities. And to say that you are going to cut transportation, that is, in a sense, taking away their rights. You're taking away their choice of being able to be treated just like anybody else would. Because how would you feel if someone told you, oh, we can't go anywhere today because we don't have the money? Oh, we can't do anything today because we don't have the money? That's essentially what you're doing to them. You have to let them have their choice. They were not, they were born with these intellectual and physical disabilities. They didn't choose it. So, to take it away from them is taking away their right to be part of the community and not just in it or sitting in the house all day or not doing anything for themselves. A lot of my members love going out. They don't want to sit at home. They want to go out and go to the movies. They want to go out and go bowling. They want to go out, go to the mall or what have them. So, to say that, oh, we can't do it because we're not being reimbursed for it is taking away their right to be able to do what they want to do just like we're able to do what we want to do. And my last, my question is, how would you feel if someone told this exact same thing to your loved one? What if the roles were reversed? How would you feel to have your loved one be told, oh, you can't do this because there's no money? That is all.
Thank you. Yes.
Good evening. My name is Pat Peters. And I want to thank you for listening to me tonight. I have a son, Chris Peters, who is age 44 and has been a lifelong resident of Oakland County, as myself also. He attends New Gateway and has for 18 years. We appreciate the services New Gateway has provided. It's been excellent all these years. There's been no complaints we can make in the services that the county has provided. Chris has an intractable seizure disorder since birth, among other disorders. He cannot sit down for more than one hour. This has been his case for his entire life. After sitting eating, he has to get up and walk around. He, if he sits down during the day for more than an hour, it's not to his choosing. So, by adjusting the transportation funding, people with special needs have special needs. And the condition now, since the new busing started, is he's on the bus for too long. He's sitting on the bus for two and a half hours, from 2:00 till 4:30. And when he gets off the bus, he's ready to go to sleep. And he requires 10 hours of continuous sleep every night. So, he has to go to bed at 7:00. Start getting ready for bed at 7:00. Chris has lived in a house provided by Angel's Place and it's always been wonderful for him. We have, they're trying to, they report back to me that he is tired and anxious when he gets off the bus because he's been on it for so long. We know that. Now, the new transportation company he has had for 18 years has been on-time transportation. They've done a wonderful job. And they brought him home by 3:00 every day, from 2:00 to 3:00. So, when the adjustment to the funding was done, as you know, they went out, they went under. They couldn't survive with that kind of funding. So, the new transportation company, I was over there to help get Chris off the bus and watch closely what's happening. And first, they were coming in at 5:00 with him. And so, the situation is they have too many people on the bus. They have too many people to deliver to the homes. And it's requiring them to get home later and later. Now, some people cannot take that, and Chris is one of them. He never stops smiling, but he can't express himself, so. And the new transportation company is doing a wonderful job. Except they're courteous and they're concerned, but they have to deliver everybody and it's just not working out.
Well, we thank you for your comments. I know that Trish and others have been listening and we'll certainly look into that particular situation.
If they could adjust their schedule, their time schedule, and bring Chris home earlier, that would solve the problem. Hasn't happened yet, so. All right. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Mary Lou Geisinger. My daughter is in one of the JARQ homes. She's also deaf. And I've noticed that you did not provide interpreters today for the deaf person served or for the staff who are also deaf. So, that created quite a problem because they don't know what you're saying. And even though you have things printed up here, they missed all the conversations. So, I think it's important for you to realize that you're cutting off a group of people by not providing the service. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
Good evening. My name is Sheri Smith. I work for a fantastic organization, JARQ. I work with an awesome team. This is my own heart. Am I the smartest? No. But I have a heart as big as a big teddy bear. This is not a job for me. This is an experience. And I have come from the mental. This is an experience, and I have come from the Mental Health Society. As a little girl, five years old, I came through a lot, through counseling, through support, through good teachers, therapy, group therapy. I know how it is to be mentally challenged. But since now I'm on the other side now, my, my passion is to help. This organization needs help. It's an, it's, it's not even a job for me. It has taught me so much in life, and the people I work with have changed my life. The workers that I work with are incredible. We work so hard, we're so dedicated, and I use my car. I don't even ask for mileage. The guys want to go out, they're stressed out, hey, we're going to go to the park, you know, just walking, you know, group therapy, whatever's on their mind after stressed out. I come from a background, and I'm a blueprint of being an underdog. Now, I'm not. So I'm asking everybody here, I work, I work with incredible people. The office staff, they're incredible. But I'm asking you, as I am an overcomer, that please take this into consideration, that we, we need help. And I don't want, I, I, it hurts me when I hear stories of, well, I have two to three jobs. And everybody needs a hundred percent. And this has changed my life. And I just want to say, please take this into consideration, because it's, it's incredible, the experience and how it's changed my life. And I would, Mr. Coleman, Cohen, I would really recommend this. And workers need a raise, bad. You know, we're trying to put gas in our car. I'm trying to put gas in my car just to get to work. And, but I love doing what I do. So I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Yes.
Good evening. I'm not a speaker person, but I just feel very strong. My name's Janet Peterson. I'm in Troy, a resident. My son is in a progressive lifestyles home in Clarkston. Wonderful. We specifically moved back from overseas in nineteen ninety-seven to Oakland County because of the community mental health services here. So we've been involved in it for years. And my son's living the life as he says that he always wanted to live. He loves to go on outings. He does not participate in any vocational program for men, behavioral issues and just interest issues. It just hasn't worked out. And he wasn't a program through New Horizons, where you used to work as center-based, and they took out that program away or really limited it. So progressive staff is wonderful in taking him up, but with the budget cuts, they don't necessarily have the staff to take him to his softball games that he loved through Adaptive Recreation in Clarkston. And the bowling, adaptive bowling, they don't have the staff to do it. And now, and they do the best that they can, they're wonderful. He's happy about being in the home, but now, on top of that, if you take away the transportation to the few things that they, when they do have the staff to get him, it's going to severely impact his quality of life. He doesn't have much in his life. And I wish you would very much consider, reconsider funding these, because like they said, doctor's appointments, he's a liver transplant patient. He goes to the liver clinic. They bring him from Clarkston to the liver clinic. Who's going to pay all these medical bills? Who's going to pay for all the transportation for these people, their medical appointments? That's not vocational. I don't think it's going to be covered. And I just really sincerely hope that you consider this population. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who wishes to address this as a public comment? There being no one, do we have anyone on the, virtually?
Yes. We have Danielle Charon. Should I move to the next?
Yeah, well, he didn't respond?
No.
Okay. Yes, go to the next one, please. We'll come back to him.
Joan Wolf. Saleem Karim.
Yes, thank you. Okay. One second. Good evening. My name is Saleem Karim. I'm the program supervisor at New Gateways, a community skill building program in Waterford. People with intellectual and developmental disabilities are now at risk of losing their housing due to OCHN's unsustainable rates. This is inexcusable. Oakland County is ranked the seventy-first wealthiest in the United States per capita out of three thousand one hundred forty-three counties. How is it possible that among all the neighboring counties, Oakland County is the only one that has unsustainable rates for group homes? It's because in the last two years, OCHN has consistently not prioritized the vital services of people with ADD. In less than two years, two vocational programs have closed due to OCHN's unsustainable rates, causing approximately two hundred people with disabilities to lose their services. OCHN's leadership will claim this was due to provider consolidation, but that is not true. Just ask the providers. Nothing to that degree of failure happened in any neighboring county. Last October, the state mandated an eighty-five cent wage increase for direct support professionals. And despite that, OCHN chose to keep DSP's pay rates flat. Again, that failure did not happen in any neighboring county. The DSPs of every neighboring county, they got that increase, not ours. After that, OCHN failed people with disabilities again by giving unsustainable rates for transportation, causing some of them to already lose their transportation. Again, nothing like that happened in any neighboring county. And now, because of OCHN's unsustainable rates, the most vulnerable population is on the lur, on the verge of losing their services when it comes to their homes and defunding transportation from community-loving support rates. In August, even with all these failures to provide funding for the people who need it most, this board voted in another bonus for the CEO. This is, this one was worth fifteen thousand dollars, plus a salary increase worth about six thousand dollars. Only two members of OCHN voted against it, only Ms. Roots and Mr. Torres did the right thing by voting against it. And that happened just in August. OCHN leadership needs to prioritize the services of people with disabilities. Anything less is unacceptable. It's only a choice. You have the funding. Do the right thing for the people you're supposed to serve.
Zachary Cardinal.
Good evening. So my name's Zach Cardinal. I'm a member of the OCHN Committee of the, or Citizens Advisory Committee, as well as representing a number of families through AMORC that receive supports and services through OCHN. I'm really, I just want to be transparent with how, how I'm experiencing this. The juxtaposition's really interesting to me, because on one hand, you look at the room, you see how many people came out and spoke tonight, and it's really moving, and it makes me feel even more proud to be a part of this community. But the flip side is outside of Brecka's amazing cartwheel, this is not a happy time. In, in, without just repeating the same things everyone else has been telling you over and over and over, the instability is real. Saleem just mentioned a number of providers that had closed down over the past couple of years, and those people are going on wait lists. And I know that's an illegal word to use, but it's the truth. And we're seeing that this is not just a quality control issue between providers, because as we just witnessed, I think it was Mr. Peters' comments on transportation, not all providers are the same. I ask you please to reconsider the proposed rates for residential and vocational provider, providers. This is not going away and is only causing pain for folks that have had a life of instability. It wasn't that long ago, we were bringing folks out of institutions into community placement. Two thousand nine was the last institution that was closed down. We're better than this. We have had a super-strong provider network for years. Why it's crumbling now makes no sense. The wait lists show folks need support. This is not a time to be putting pressure on providers. We should be lifting them up and championing the supports that Oakland County provides. Thank you.
Crystal Rochan.
Hi, I'm Crystal Rochan. I am... Can you hear me?
Yes, Crystal, we can hear you.
Okay. I am the program, I am director for Employment Options Unlimited, which we are part of Loser Pre Vocational Services. This is the second vocational program that I am director of. The first was Excel Employment Options, which actually went out of business just as COVID was starting to hit. While Excel didn't go under specifically because of OCHN's involvement, OCHN didn't provide a support to also be able to continue as a provider for Oakland County, which we had done so for many, many years. As a provider, we are once again faced with the uncertainty of being able to continue providing supports to individuals. We have provided support for over twenty years. The rates that we are being provided are not sustainable. Our staff, who have held out with us throughout COVID, throughout the closing of Excel, and now as EOU, I hate to see what they do if they're faced with the information that there is possibility of us losing again. If OCHN doesn't step in to provide rates that's substantial, just our program, but several other programs, you're going to have a vocational network that just crumbles, leaving many people who are not just out for vocational support in skill building and going to day, but people who are employed in our community, who have held their jobs for fifteen-plus years are going to lose, lose the supports that they rely on and need to be able to sustain that employment. It's been proven to be successful with individuals who had their jobs for at least fifteen years, twenty years, the benefit that this service network has provided to them. On top of the home providers that I've been in contact with over the many years of working in Oakland County that have closed, that have pulled out of Oakland County because the rates are not substantial, it's, it's sad. And if OCHN doesn't stand to do something, the individuals who need us the most are the ones who are suffering. And I hope that OCHN does relook at what they're doing to, to see the supports that these individuals not only need, but absolutely deserve. Thank you.
Will Owens.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for this opportunity. My name is Will Owens from Worry Free Transportation, and I am the CEO. And I am a proud veteran of the United States Air Force. I would like to talk about transportation rates and cost. I understand that a research was completed concerning transportation rates and the standardized rate structure that's at hand. A few insurance expenses, excuse me, excuse transportation expenses. Average insurance cost for one vehicle for one month is about a thousand dollars. Some are paying up to fifteen, sixteen hundred dollars per month. But let's just deal with the one thousand dollars. A vehicle note for a transit van that could transport three, four wheelchairs, thousand dollars per month. Gas, three hundred dollars per month. Employee costs, eighteen hundred dollars per month. This would total forty-one hundred dollars. If we were transporting four wheelchairs at thirty-three dollars a month, excuse me, thirty-three dollars a day, that would equal a hundred and thirty-two dollars for one day. Multiplied by twenty days would be two hundred and sixty, two thousand six hundred and forty dollars. Forty-one hundred dollars of expense minus twenty-six forty of income is a deficit of one thousand four hundred and sixty dollars. That's not including taxes, administrative costs, maintenance, cleaning, et cetera. So we're already at a deficit. Now, we have one particular route that we're transporting one wheelchair and one ambulatory individual. That monthly revenue would be one thousand ten dollars. The expense is forty-one hundred dollars still. Minus one thousand ten dollars, we're at a deficit of three thousand ninety dollars. I'm not understanding how OCHN expects any transportation company to operate in a deficit. It's very unfortunate that On Time has gone out of business after serving Mork for well over thirty years. If we only had or only transported individuals from OCHN, we would be out of business right now. Fortunately, we've been diversified and had other contracts to support these rates, and we're only able to do it. And we had to reduce our number of individuals transported in order to stay in business. Please reevaluate your transportation costs. Rates that are currently given to us are rates that we had back in two thousand fifteen. That's almost ten years ago now. So it does not make sense to operate at the current rates. Thank you.
Michael Rice. Jeff McClure. Joan Wolf. Danielle Charon.
Okay. So at this time, we'll close the public hearing. I want to thank all those who came out, many who have left. I know... I know other people have things to do this evening. You are certainly not obligated to stay. As is our practice, we will take these comments into consideration and make appropriate responses. I know there's some individual cases that perhaps Trish has listened to and will have a customer service or others get in touch. But before you do leave, I will say that I do agree that, and I think we'll all agree, that this system is underfunded. We are struggling, as all our providers are, to do the best we can with the funds that we have. We do not print money. We are not the federal government. We have a limited amount of money. We service twenty-two thousand people in Oakland County, probably more than that, through the provider network and some directly. So, and all of us on this board, nearly all of us, have family members who you services. And the decisions we do make impact our own families. So, for example, I have a son who's thirty-nine years old, who lives in a group home and has transportation to go to his vocational workplace. So all those issues are things that impact us personally. I don't want anyone to leave here thinking that this board is not invested in the community we serve because we are part, already part, of the community that is served. So we will work with you. But I will say that there have, decisions have to be made, and we're not afraid to make them. We will review them if people point out that they don't agree, and we will get back to you. I can't commit when, but we will. So at that, with that, I'm going to suggest that we take a five-minute break because we've had a long time, and I know some people have to leave. And I hope you get safely to your home or wherever you're going, and have a pleasant evening. Thank you for attending this evening and speaking. Okay, we're going to resume. We're going to resume our meeting, and as is customary, I don't chair the Cow Meeting itself, so I'm going to pass the baton over to our Policy Chair, Yvette, and she is going to move forward with the remainder of the meeting.
Okay. Can I get a motion for approval of the agenda?
Support?
Any questions? It's been properly moved and supported. All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Ayes have it. Finance Committee, I'm going to turn that over to Pastor Jones, who is the Vice Chair.
Thank you very much. At this time, I'm going to call for, at this time, do this, I'm sorry. Thank you very much. At this time, I'm going to ask for Robert Boomfield to come forward, our CFL. Thank you, Robert.
Check. Thank you, Pastor Jones. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
So I'm going to go over a couple of things on the financial update. I know that we've got some contracts that we're seeking approval for, and I see that up on the slide. I don't know if that's where we're starting. September financials first. Okay, sounds good. So just a quick overview. For the month of September, you can see our MDHHS payments coming in. We did have an uptick, and in total, we were just shy of thirty-two million dollars. About twenty-two million of that was DAB. And you can see the other breakdowns if anybody has any details that they want. Our next slide is eligibles. And again, you can see the trend there. If we look at two thousand twenty-three, that line above the bars gives some indication to the financial challenges that we've been discussing, that Mr. Cohen referenced earlier in the conversation. Overall, our numbers have been trending down through the end of the year. Our overall asset picture, this is a comparative between two thousand twenty-three and two thousand twenty-four. Our cash is down about thirteen, fourteen million dollars. Our receivables are about even. And overall, our capital assets are down about two million dollars. That's mostly depreciation. For our liabilities, our overall vendor payables are up about two million dollars. The vast majority of those dollars are related to our provider partners. And the rest of our assets were relatively flat. Or I'm sorry, liabilities. And then our net asset position, we are showing an overall decline in our net assets of about seventeen million dollars, just under eighteen million. You can see that our total assets reflect a decrease, and our liabilities are about a million dollars higher. It's kind of a high-level overview of our balance sheet position, our assets, liabilities, and net operating position. Does anybody have any questions on that so far? Please.
So we noticed that in eligibles, the DAB population is slowly decreasing. Is there a particular subgroup that is not eligible anymore? Or have people moved out of the county?
Dr. Hines, you're, what you're seeing is something that's system-wide across the state that is problematic. We've been advocating and trying to work with the state to talk about why people are changing from DAB, which is disabled, age, and blind, which is lifetime, right? And moving into TANF, and it's temporary aid to needy families. And like Robert is saying, with this decrease in DABS or being miscategorized, it's costing us funding as well. So we're advocating with the state to really look at why people are being changed. And then also, one of the meetings I was in today with the other PHP CEOs, one of the other CEOs talked about the impact it's had on them financially over the last five years, where they've seen such a decrease or a change in those categories. It's estimated it cost them thirty-four million dollars in the last five years because of those changes. And we know during the public health emergency, that was supposed to be, go untouched. But he's showing through some review that those things were actually still changing, even though people were supposed to, their Medicaid was not supposed to be touched. So we're looking into that, and we're, NASSA, of course, has been tracking it ongoing. Now we want to quantify it in terms of how much money we could be losing from that as well, so that we can go back to the state and work with them to talk about how this issue is impacting us and our ability to put those dollars out into the community.
But my question was also, which particular subsection of this population is shifting from DAB to TANF?
That's, we don't have an actual rationale as to why they're shifting. The only thing I can think of is that we know that Medicaid spend downs resurfaced after the public health emergency, and this transition shouldn't occur. So we're looking at those individuals that were DABS that are now TANFs and trying to figure out why. But we also want to work with our providers to make sure that if they see a change, if they're aware of a change, because we can see some things before it gets out to the larger provider network, and we can tell them when we see these eligibilities come up. But it's still, it doesn't appear that it's based on eligibility timetable. It's based on some system programming, because we have a lot of people who were put on this program called Plan First, but, which is really not a Medicaid benefit, it's a family planning benefit. And so we had even gentlemen who were sixty years old or older being on Plan First, and we know that's an error. So there's some system errors, and I think they're looking at number of completions as opposed to quality of where these people are landed or being categorized.
Thanks. So continuing and moving over to the statement of changes in financial position. Overall, you can see our revenue changes. Our Medicaid dollars were actually up about eighteen million dollars. State General Fund was down about a million. Our county funds remain stable each year, and our other funds were down about two million dollars in terms of our revenue. Our expenses were up about twenty-two million dollars for the provider network, about two million dollars on our admin side. Our grant funding is down about three million dollars, and our other income is down about seven hundred thousand. And then a summary of that is on the last slide in terms of our net income or our change in our financial position. And you can see that for the current year, we're projecting about seventeen point seven million dollars. We are looking into some possible revenue opportunities and confirming that everything's been properly accounted for. So I think there may be some upside to that. And I know that we had originally, at the last board meeting, projected about fifteen million dollars in loss. And I anticipate that we're going to be closer to that than the seventeen point seven when we get through all of our reconciliations.
Robert, that may be a good opportunity. Early on, there was this discussion about this fifty-three million dollars, and hopefully, people did not think that that's coming directly to us. But I think other groups share in that, and we, yes, we may get a percentage of it, but we don't get fifty-three million. I think when we look at the deficit that we're anticipating, the state is not going to give us fifty-three million dollars, so we only get a portion of. And I think that's very, very important, you know, for people to understand, and especially as people are saying, hey, how come I don't have this and how come I don't have that? Do you want to speak to that or no?
Yes, no, please. I appreciate the opportunity. We will not be getting fifty-three million dollars from the state, but we will be getting a portion of that, and it's based on a formula. And the exact number, I'm not able to provide. But I can tell you that it's shared between the ten PIHPs in the state. And I'm not entirely clear presently whether that would be something that we would reflect as an accrual back into our two thousand twenty-four numbers or if that would be something that would be considered revenue in the subsequent year. And more broadly, I appreciate an opportunity to just comment on our overall financial condition. So the last three years, I think everyone is aware, have been profoundly challenging and has been mentioned in various comments already this evening, challenging for our providers, but also very much challenging for us. And if we could print money, I think that we would want to be able to provide as many services to as many people as we possibly could. But we are ultimately a tax-funded, a public-funded organization. And like all organizations that are funded publicly, the education system, public transportation, mental health, we are under incredible financial stress, so.
I have a question about the grant funding. Was that grant that has expired, or is there a reduction?
I believe that there are some grants that expired, but I would need to actually do a little bit of research into that to get you a better answer, and I will do that. Yes.
First, thank you. I think it's important for anyone watching to know that this is, looking back at September thirtieth, that is our fiscal year end.
Correct.
We do not run on a calendar year. We run on a fiscal year. We run on the same year that the legislature runs on the state budget because we're primarily funded through the state and also federal monies that come to the state. So if you're looking at this for year end, the takeaways I am seeing are, number one, the provider network exceeded, payments to the provider network for services exceeded last year by twenty-two million dollars. I think you said that earlier, roughly. Also, we spent seventeen million dollars more than we had in terms of revenues this year. So we call it a loss because that's what it's called, but we don't, we don't sell a product. We don't provide a product, we provide services. So it's not a loss, I would call it a deficit. But I want everyone to understand, that seventeen million dollars came out of our reserves. That did not come out of the thin air. We can't take loans. That money came out of reserves that we had placed in past years into funding so that when the time came, that we needed those monies for primarily the provider network, that, that money was there. Now, I think earlier we talked in, including this year, fiscal year and the last two, we've reduced our reserves by forty-five million dollars.
That's correct.
So this is not a case of us not spending money. In fact, we spent not only the money we've received in the provider network, but we've also spent an additional forty-five million dollars of our own reserves. Now unfortunately, that's not sustainable. That cannot continue because we, we don't have anywhere to go. And we can't tell people, oh, we're shutting down in August of this fiscal year because there's no more money. So we have to shepherd and that money as best we can. So what do we see on the, and unfortunately, what's very equally problematic and challenging is that the eligibility continues to go down and nosedive. And that's what in part we rely upon a significant part of our funding. So we're getting squeezed from the revenue side and the expense side as an organization. And there has to be a change because we don't have, maybe there's a couple more years worth of reserves, and that's it. And we can't be in that situation. So we're going to have to find a way out of it. I don't know how much help we're going to get. That's why it's so frustrating when you heard earlier the fifty-three million dollars that is being withheld. Is even our portion going to solve all the problems of the world for us? No. But that's money that is, belongs to not only our network, but other, the nine other networks, and others who provide services in the state of Michigan. And if anybody is, if you're going to be upset with anybody, why the department is not releasing that money, we, we have not been told why, and that's wrong. So we're going to have to get an answer and get to the bottom of it with help from our friends in the legislature. So I just, from my perspective, I've been here a few years and on the Finance Committee, but everyone who's been here has seen the, the continued drop in the reserves. And look, this is not an issue, we have to take, we have to take care of the financial issues because if we don't, nobody else will. So this is a question, this is an issue of funding. We, what is our administrative overhead?
About six and a half percent.
So our administrative overhead is six and a half percent. I'll match that against anybody in the state of Michigan for a nonprofit organization with approximately five hundred million dollars in, five hundred million dollars that we are responsible for. That is a very, very good rate. So we're not wasting any money on administrative overhead or anything of that nature. There's no mismanagement. Our last three audits have been crystal clear that we've had in terms of what we call a clean audit. The problem is funding, and we don't, we don't produce that funding. We only distribute what we receive. So until we get an increase in So until we get an increase in funding, we're all going to continue to feel that stress. So I would just ask the providers, and many of them were here tonight, that please join us in seeking additional funding for a critically important service. And by the way, it's just not for, we heard many, maybe one part in, of, of the community speak tonight with individuals relying upon transportation, but we service individuals across the whole host of healthcare challenges, including people with drug abuse, people with mental health problems, all types of, you know, issues that we could go on and talk about, but that make up the twenty-two thousand people that we serve through, through and with the providers. So we hear everyone, but we also see what the trend has been and we, this happened in a very, very short period of time, this precipitous drop. And we were concerned about it. It probably is worse than we thought it was going to be. And there has been no offsetting funding for this loss. So we are making do with what we have and we'll continue to do that because that's what our mission is and provide as much funding to those who need it within the means that we receive it. There's, like I said, we don't print money. I wish we did, but we, we don't because if there's anybody who needs it, it's the people in the community we serve. So I wanted to kind of, Robert, thank you very much. He gives the CPA review of, of it, but I wanted to put it in context and not just this year, but we, we've seen the last three years. And the bad news is I, we don't see a lot of relief on the horizon and that's going to be a real challenge for us, for the providers and for those we serve. But we're dedicated to doing the best we can.
And I think, Mr. Chairman, and with this, it shows we're trying to do the best we can with what we have and to make sure that we continue to service those groups, you know, the twenty-three thousand organizations or whatever that we're working with, the people that we're working with in the different areas with what we have. And again, you know, and you all have probably heard me talk, we, we have no control over what's coming in. We are trying to use what comes in, distribute to meet the needs of the people that's out there as this group that was in here today. And so it's very, very important when you look at our numbers that, that we understand and you see, wow, that's why I wanted to clear that fifty-three million. People say, wow, they're going to get this. No, we're not. And the different, different organizations. And people say, gee whiz, thank you, Mr. Chairman, for talking about the administrative piece because that's less than ten percent, less than ten percent that goes toward administration. Less than ten percent. So the administration, I make it a lot either. So very important. Thank you. Thank you. I don't know if anybody has any other questions. Thank you, Robert. I think we're going to go to, I'm sorry? Yep, yep. Oh, Robert's still next on this, right? Whatever. Well, he's gone over the trans, I think. So we got the contractual obligations, I think. Am I at that level? Thank you very much. And so, Robert, I guess you're going to bring those, those people forward, contractors, contracts. This may be the Robert Bunk show today.
Yeah, maybe. So I don't know, I don't know if I'm doing all of them, but I know I'm doing some of them. Um, and the one in particular that I wanted to cover in terms of seeking board approval is for a continuation of our audit firm. So the auditors have been BDO and I'm asking in the wake of some of the changes that we've experienced administratively to continue with BDO for one extra year. Normally, we would be putting that contract out for an RFP. And we are in the process of developing an RFP for next year, but for the current fiscal year, I'm requesting board approval to continue with BDO, BDO as our auditor for one more year, please.
Any questions on that? And I think that we can move for receiving that and supporting it. Can I get a motion?
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
I think we have one more, Robert? If you want to bring that one?
I think, I think that's all for me.
Is that it?
Yeah, I think Adam is up next.
I'm sorry? Adam? Okay.
Thank you again.
Thank you very much. I'll take my page back for a moment.
Good evening. I'm here to request the extension of our Teladoc slash My Strength contract. We're seeking to renew this for one additional year. The, the company My Strength has been subsumed under the Teladoc umbrella, so there will be some changes. And I believe that the stance we're taking right now is that we'd like to extend this for one more year. This will get us through our current NCQA cycle. My Strength is a component of what we do to meet our NCQA requirements and it's helpful to us to not disrupt that mid-cycle, but then at the end of this year, we'll likely do an RFP and explore other options. So for now, we're, we're asking to continue working with Teladoc and My Strength so that we can offer this service to people we serve in the community and continue to meet our NCQA requirements.
Any questions on it? Can I have a motion? Yes.
I'm sorry, I, I just was able to pull this up, so I didn't get an opportunity to really check, but I noticed the differences in the annual cost. Was that like pre-arranged that?
So that is related to My Strength being acquired by Teladoc. The, the new service that they offer is, is expanded and it seems to be enhanced in several ways from what we've had previously. But that is also part of the reason I think we're compelled to explore options at the end of this fiscal year through RFP and potentially see if there are other products out there. Yeah.
With the increased cost, we've also secured some grant funding to help offset that through SAMSA as well as funded through SUDPA two dollars as regular. So we do have some grant funding to help with that increase.
Is that a question for him? Oh, okay. Thank you. Is there any other question regarding that? Then can I may have a motion to accept and, uh, this, uh, contract? Still moved?
Second.
Been moved and seconded, all in support?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you very much, sir.
Okay. Thank you, everyone.
I think we had the Medservant contract, MacRita Massey. Thank you.
Good evening. I am here to request extension of our contract with Metfercent. Metfercent is a credentialing verification organization. So what that means is that essentially they do the obtaining and verification of all the documents required and the completion of primary source verification for practitioners in the network. So that means they verify in education, licensure, ensure that practitioners aren't sanctioned, they verify work history. That file, those files are returned back to us for us to complete our credentialing processes for practitioners. So this contract here will be the fourth year that we contract with Metfercent for this activity. Requesting an extension for one more year. Our intent is to issue an RFP for this service sometime in FY twenty-four. Metfercent is an NCQA accredited CBO, so that helps us with our NCQA review processes because if an organization is NCQA accredited, there are some standards that NCQA basically gives us Dean status on. So it, we would always want to contract with an NCQA accredited provider. Are there any questions that I can answer?
No, you know, I read some of the notes that you had on that and I'm, I'm excited about it for what you do. So can I get a motion to, um, accept and really extend the contract? Still moved?
Second.
Probably moved. Any objections? All in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Very quick for your day. Thank you. Okay. I think Kalina's on, online with us.
Yes, good evening.
Thank you.
Senior Counsel for OCHN. Today before you, I have the PIHP contract for fiscal year 2025. The contract amount is there. This is, governs our services that we provide to the community for the fiscal year twenty-five.
Questions on that? Hearing none. Need a motion to approve? Still moved?
Second.
Been moved and approved, all in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Thank you.
Pastor Jones?
Yes.
Kalina, can I just ask a clarifying question? Do you want full board approval tonight or you?
It was supposed to be one of the other business, but if we can't do that, we can wait until the next board meeting, just next week.
We do have a quorum, so I'll defer to you on the board.
Because of where it's sitting, it wouldn't be appropriate for us to try to approve it by full board at this time. It should have, it would have had to be under the other business section. So this is fine.
So we're okay with that then?
Yeah.
Okay. Because then that, the same thing would be on the next, on the contract amendment. Kalina?
Yes, sir. Thank you. So this is for our last fiscal year contract. This is for fiscal year twenty-four. This is an amendment that adds an additional six point five million dollars to the agreement. It updates our rate capitation methodology and includes the CCBH supplemental capitation rate methodology as well.
All right. Thank you. Questions on that at all? Anyone? If not, then I entertain a motion to accept. Still moved?
Second.
Been moved, probably motion to accept it. All in favor? Aye. Aye. Those opposed? And again, I guess the same process would work if that this board has the authority to do that versus taking it before the whole board because we have a quorum, right?
Yeah, we can wait. Yeah.
It would, but that's not necessary at this time.
Okay.
We will present it the full board next week. Thank you, sir.
Okay. And I have a, what, the next contract I have is for Blue Cross. Nicole Williams? Thank you, Kalina.
Pastor Jones, if I may? I wanted to take this opportunity and I, you know, I totally forgot when the meeting first started to announce our brand new HR Director. She started one week ago, Ms. Nicole Williams. Please welcome her. After a long search, we have found our new Director of HR.
Testing, okay. Just wanted to make sure I was able to be heard. Good evening, members of the board. It's my pleasure. I'm very excited to be here with OCHN. I did ask Roger to come with me as my safeguard here. We have a two-part presentation for you this evening. First, we're going to go over a little history in regards to the Public Act 152, a little background and request for resolution. And then secondly, we'll go into our healthcare benefits planning for 2025.
You've got to move this line.
Apologies. So we're ready for the next slide to go into, um, our opt-out request. Oh, there we are. All right. So just for a little background, in 2011, the PA 152 limits the amount that a public employer can pay toward an employee medical benefits plan. Since two, since that time, pardon me, the public employer can exempt themselves from the limit requirements with a hard cap to pay no more than eighty percent of the total amount of the annual medical costs. Apologies. Is that better? Sounds better. All right. Since 2011, OCHN's board has approved the opt-out of the limits entirely. This aligns the organization with the Oakland County Board of Commissioners and executive officers. The exempt request is adopted by other prepaid and patient health plans as well in the region, including Detroit Wayne Integrated Health. Recruitment and retention. So one of the biggest reasons for this ask is our ability to recruit and retain. Our current benefit design and exemption from the requirements of PA 152 allows OCHN to compete in a highly competitive market for qualified staff to plan and implement critical programs with effective monitoring to ensure the best outcomes for persons served in our network. As a leadership team, we seek to offer competitive pay and benefits to our staff in order to attract and retain talented individuals. We consistently monitor our healthcare costs and utilization and we have internal processes in place to bid out medical prescription, dental, vision, et cetera, to further manage costs. The legislative mandate constrains management's flexibility to structure total compensation packages that attract highly qualified employees who contribute to the benefit of our organization and the community at large. And lastly, we are confident that we are exercising appropriate judgment and setting our compensation and benefit structure in a manner that helps us attract and retain the right people to guide this organization through the challenges and changing environment. Albeit tiny, on the screen here and in your package, you'll see the actual resolution being brought forth to the board. Okay. Our request for adoption of resolution. So today, we respectfully ask that you support our autonomy and management decisions by approving the attached resolution to exempt OCHN from the mandate of Public Act 152. Passage of an exemption resolution will permit our organization to proceed with scheduled open enrollment, which we anxiously anticipate for later this month, on the certainty of the plans and pricing that were in effect during the plan, planning period. Any questions?
Thank you very much for this report and also I'll echo our Chair, being our CEO in relation to you being here with us tonight and filling that position so that, you know, we all probably have a smile on our face now, a smile on our face. And so I'd like to get a motion to receive her report and, and the recommendations. Still moved?
Second.
It probably moved the second. Do you have a second down there? Thank you very much. Looking up here, probably do a following the same thing John and I do, look over this way, right? But thank you. You've heard it all in favor?
Aye.
An adoption? An adoption? Of this?
Aye.
Those opposed? None? Thank you very much. Thank you.
On to part two.
Yeah.
So in regards to our healthcare benefits planning, for the next plan year 2025, OCHN works closely with our insurance brokers, which is the Assured Partners organization. They offer a host of services and support to OCHN in regards to employee benefit management, design, enrollment support, troubleshooting, making sure that we have the appropriate quotes in place to make the necessary decisions, and allowing us to evaluate utilization data, projections, and do further analysis. With their help, we have before the board today is to present the 2025 plan year design features. One of the biggest changes is that we are hopeful that we can offer our workforce more options in the area of benefits. We currently offer an HMO, a PPO, and we are proposing to also include the option of a high deductible health plan. And so here we have a few little highlights of each of those respective plans. Obviously, with an HMO, there's a defined network that employees work within. They do experience higher office visit co-pays, but have a lower employee premium. As with the preferred provider organization, a PPO, they have access to an expanded network. There are higher office visit co-pays and a higher employee premium for that luxury. With the new high deductible health plan, there's also a higher deductible. However, it comes with lower employee premiums and is combined with a health savings account for the employees to use as they see fit. Both our HMO and PPO plans will continue to have an health reimbursement account associated with it. We provide those for individuals enrolled in either the HMO or PPO plan. OCHN will fund these accounts to assist with the in-network deductibles and coinsurance based upon the employee's enrollment selection. So there's a fund of $1,750 that will be put in for those enrolled in a single plan, $2,750 if it were an employee and/or employee plus family or employee plus one, also known as a family coverage. For the health savings account, this would be something that's provided to those who opt into the high deductible plan. Similarly, we will fund that account respective to the person's enrollment, $1,250 for a single and $2,250 for a family. We'll continue to offer prescription drug coverage. Again, there's a change there given our third plan option. Those who have the HMO and/or the PPO will continue to have access to prescription coverage through EHIM. And those who opt into the high deductible plan will have a prescription coverage through Blue Cross by the name of Simply Blue. Both are multi-tier plans that offers generic, preferred formulary, and non-preferred drugs as well. Next slide. We wanted to just share just a little insight into the number of enrollees that we currently have. With our current HMO, we have forty-one employees who are enrolled in that plan. And in our PPO, we have one hundred and sixty. And so obviously, the remainder of our workforce opts out of our insurance package. With respect to costs, we have a year-over-year comparison here for you, inclusive of the 2025 employee cost share structure. So for the HMO, the benefits premium owed by the employees will remain the same. There'll be no increase of those premiums that employees will have to pay through their bi-weekly pay. There will be an increase to the PPO plan. For a single coverage, the cost goes from seventy-two dollars roughly to a little over one hundred and five. That's an increase of thirty-three dollars and forty-five cents bi-weekly. To a person, we'll go from one twenty-nine to two hundred and seven dollars and seventy-one cents with an increase of seventy-eight dollars and eleven cents. And a family plan will go from one hundred and sixty dollars to two hundred and fifty-nine dollars and sixty-three cents with an increase of ninety-two dollars and sixty-three cents. For the new plan that we propose offering in 2025, those premiums, we don't have the, obviously, we don't have the 2024 comparison, but those premiums will be the same as the HMO plan. So those will be at fifty-five dollars for a single, eighty-seven dollars for a two-person, and one hundred and fifteen for a family. Okay? So the slide on the board here also comes with a handout that offers more details into the differences with respect to co-pays, coinsurance, a maximum out-of-pocket cost, and things of that nature. Some of these will be new terminology that we'll have to educate our workforce on, because as you can see, there's going to be a change with respect to the HRA, the health reimbursement account. Last year, OCHN paid the deductible and coinsurance cost for the employee. Going into the 2025 year, we are contributing an amount into those accounts based on the person's elections. So as you can see, for the Blue Cross Blue Shield PPO on the handout, the deductible, OCHN will contribute twenty-five hundred dollars for a single, single coverage, and five thousand to a family, which they can use for, again, either co-pays, deductible, coinsurance, so forth and so on. The coinsurance will remain at twenty percent in-network. And again, the employees will have access to the HRA to utilize for those costs. For the HMO, again, the premiums are remaining the same. Unlike last year where OCHN paid the deductible and coinsurance, now we're paying into an HRA based on the employee's election. For the HMO, there will be a fifteen-hundred dollar deposit into the HRA for a single and a three thousand for family coverage. And if you notice on both of those, there is a maximum out-of-pocket line. For the PPO and HMO, they are the same. So it's expected that an employee who has a single plan will have, will pay no more than six thousand three hundred and fifty on either HMO or PPO, and twelve thousand and seven hundred for a family coverage. Which, again, they will have access to their health reimbursement account to help offset some of those costs. Both of those plans will continue to be combined with the, as we mentioned earlier, the EHIM prescription coverage. And then with respect to the new high deductible plan, again, the premiums will mirror the HMO employee costs with a deductible for single employees of two thousand and a family at four thousand dollars with the twenty percent coinsurance in-network, maximum out-of-pocket for a single plan coverage at four thousand, and eight thousand for family. And again, instead of the HRA, there will be a health savings account available to the employee based upon their elections, twelve thousand, I'm sorry, twelve hundred and fifty for a single and two thousand two hundred and fifty for a family. Robert, did you want to speak to the expense page here?
Sure. So if you note on the highlights there, effectively, what transpired was when we spoke to our broker, we were presented with a fourteen point two percent overall increase in our premiums. And what we've worked to do is structure this plan, and kudos to the HR team, to come up with something that effectively gets us at break even, where we will not be spending any additional money. We're aware of our financial challenges. The majority of the direct costs to the employees are coming through the change in the premium share for the PPO. The PPO is a higher-cost plan, so the incentive there is to not sign up for that plan. And that was a strategy recommended by our broker, and it seems to make sense. Ultimately, we are passing through costs to our employees at a higher rate than we have historically. So that's something to be mindful of. We're certainly mindful of it. And despite that, we have an incredibly rich and generous plan for our workforce that still positions us to be very strong in our efforts to recruit and retain staff.
Thank you, Robert. So as we move on to take a look at what next steps might look like, as we mentioned, we reviewed the official plan renewal with our brokers at Assured Partners. And we're looking forward to, once approved, move forward and prepare for our open enrollment, excuse the error, for the 2025 plan year, approval request for health plan administrative contract, and we'll continue to monitor cost and utilization to develop strategy for the following year.
Yes, ma'am. Questions?
Yes.
What percentage are you hoping to have under the high deductible plan?
We're forecasting twenty-six participants.
Okay.
So a little more than ten percent, I think.
And what do you think is the real selling point of that plan?
Sure. So that plan is probably best for someone who is overall generally healthy and is not going to use the benefit very much. With the incentive there being the health savings account. So there's a distinction between a health reimbursement and a health savings account. And a person who can participate in a health savings account derives other benefits in terms of their ability to save money tax-free.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Excuse me. So we know, I mean, healthcare costs are going up for everyone, so we expect some increase. But I'm just curious if I'm understanding this correctly. So you've, it seems as though the HRA is paying less than what's been paid in the past. So like, for the PPO, seventeen fifty versus twenty-five hundred in the past. So folks are going to have more out-of-pocket cost. Based on your data, you have a lot more, more than half that select that PPO, which is also increased. So I'm just wondering, was that discussed with the brokers to see if there was anything? I mean, for those, knowing that your highest number of employees are PPO, they now have an increased premium, and they're getting less reimbursements, if I'm understanding this correctly.
Yes. So the scenario that we've looked at is that fewer people would actually opt to take the PPO. So they wouldn't absorb that higher cost on the premium side. They would go to the lower-cost HMO, which is lower cost for them as individuals, and also significantly lower cost for us organizationally. I think the important thing to note there is that the broker at least indicated that though the HMO does have a, like, a smaller pool of qualified medical professionals, it is still a very broad network, and most of the people are going to find their doctor in that network.
Yeah. Just something to think about since your numbers typically with those PPOs. I mean, it could definitely be an issue for some of those employees and then looking at, like, with your HMO, it looks like the, what am I reading here? Co-pays are at, like, fifteen hundred, and they're getting seventeen fifty. It just seems off a little bit from the PPO. Like, more money is going into an HMO than with your PPO.
Yes. Yeah. So that, just for clarification, that's intentional. We want people to sign up for the HMO and the high deductible health plan and opt out of the PPO if they can. Because that is the most expensive plan for us, and now for them also.
Right. You just think of families, I mean, families that are looking for healthcare. Just food for thought is all I'm saying. I just hope all of that was looked into and maybe tried to negotiate or something a little bit more, because, you know, PPOs tend to be a better, better coverage overall. But again, it comes with a cost.
Yes. Any other questions? Listen, I, you know, thank you for this. The, I know that, that's, anything that deals with healthcare is a big issue and for employees. And one of the things, you know, when I saw this, I did not want us to lose the credibility that we are such a good place to work, okay? I know there's a lot of work being done that says that OCHN is a great place to work, okay? And so that's very important. And part of that depends on the benefits that we offer to them. And so, you know, when I looked at this, I wanted to be sure that it does, number one, meet the needs of our employees, but also helps them to say, yeah, okay, it's still a good place to work. And, you know, I'm sure there's going to be some bump in the numbers. You've already mentioned that, but that it stays that. And then similarly, in relation to what we've talked about earlier, what percentage administration, okay? So those are two areas we really want to continue to make sure that we're focusing on, offering the best for the employee, maintaining our administrative expense level, but also trying to stay in, because Susannah beat me up if we ever lose that status. So please understand that, okay? You've heard that. Can we get a motion to approve? We need it? Still moved? Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, buddy. Support?
Support.
Thank you. All in favor to adopt and receive this report? Say aye. Aye. Those opposed? All right. Thank you very much. Great job.
Thank you all.
The do-all, the do-all. Okay, where am I?
We're moving on to policy management.
Right. Policy, that's you.
Or, wait a minute.
All right.
Did Galinda have something under the PA 152?
No, I think there was.
Oh. No, I thought it came net.
I think, I think it's you.
Oh.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
It was.
Ms. Vicki Suter.
Since we shared our report.
Good evening. I'm Vicki Suter, the Director of Rights and Advocacy. We are before you asking a request for our Recipient Rights Advisory Committee. We had a current member who had resigned from the committee due to personal reasons, so that gave us a vacancy. At our November meeting, we had one applicant, and we did interview that applicant. And the Recipient Rights Advisory Committee was impressed with that applicant, and that was Amy Kupavitz. Amy has been around, and many of us know her. She has been a strong advocate for years and years and years. She also is an individual that teaches basic rights to individuals that live in licensed settings. Additionally, she has been involved locally as well as around the state regarding supportive decision-making, which is opportunities for individuals to keep their independence and not be under guardianship. And she's just a fantastic person all around, and the committee has recommended for the board to appoint her to the Recipient Rights Advisory Committee.
Any questions?
I thought, I tell you, when I read this, I thought this was impressive.
Yeah, I looked at the number of years that she's worked in the field, advocating on behalf of others, and thought that she would be a good applicant for your board. And I'm looking for a recommendation from my committee, the Policy Committee.
Still moved?
Okay, so it's been properly moved and seconded to move to the floor board for review next week. Thank you.
Thank you.
And next on the agenda is events and outreach. Susan Warner. Suzanne, I'm sorry.
Suzanne, I'm sorry. Good evening, everyone. I'll be brief. Just want to highlight a few of the events that we've had going on in November and coming up in December. Had the Oakland University Pontiac Initiative, the 10th anniversary. Christine and Tricia were there with Pastor Jones. That happened this last weekend, it was a busy weekend, actually, as well as the Everybody vs. Stigma event that we, OCHN participates on an annual basis. And I also attended the Leadership Oakland Expo this last week, and it was a great opportunity to talk about OCHN to potential leaders in the community. We have a number of trainings that are coming up as well, and those are listed for you. Also, on the 14th of November, coming up in a couple of days, we have a couple of events with the School Safety Forum, as well as we'll be hosting our SUD Community Workshop, and there's a virtual workshop. And a number of us are going to be attending the Detroit Free Press Top Places to Work Event that's coming up on Thursday. We will be putting a press release out about OCHN and the Top Places to Work Event this week, as well as a number of workshops, as mentioned. And Dana will be joining Oakland Schools as well for the transition engagement, signing that resolution with the Oakland School Superintendent. One of our longtime providers, the Alliance, is celebrating, I've talked about this before, they're celebrating their 20th anniversary, and a number of us are going to be celebrating right before our board meeting with them upstairs in this building. We'll also be hosting our all-provider meeting, our first one for the new fiscal year, and that's going to be on November the 20th. And we have a Veterans webinar coming up as well. Next slide, please. And November the 23rd is observed as International Survivor of Suicide Loss Day. There are a couple of events that are coming up. OCHN is actually hosting with Common Ground here, Survivor of Suicide Loss Day here in this building, in this room. And then we also do a partnership with the Cavalry Church in Clarkson and participate there as well. Also pleased to announce that OCHN, we do our Annual Adopt a Family Initiative, so we're participating in that again this year, and that kind of spills over between November and December. And then we have tentatively planned a Veterans Drive Through Resource Event that will be hosted here at OCHN Drive Through, so it'll be outside of the building. So still working on some details for that, but hopefully you'll hear more about that as well. And then we have a couple of trainings that are coming up as well, our Mental Health First Aid for Youth, and then Advanced Directive Training. Next slide. To some press releases that we have going out, we've already put out our Veterans Day Observance. I already mentioned that we'll be having a press release going out for our Top Places to Work. Also some good news about our Recipient Rights Assessment. Those results will be coming out this month, and announcing our new Chief Financial Officer as well. We still have our advertising ongoing. I just heard from a staff person today that they saw some of our commercials on the television, so I'm really excited to hear that. We did have some radio advertising going on for our veterans programs as well, so continue to watch out for those. And we did have a mention from one of our county commissioners from District 3, mentioned OCHN as part of some important initiatives to support in the community. And then just some highlights of our conference room usage, just to continue to keep this building at the forefront for community members to use this building. That's all I have. Any questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is the second opportunity for public comment. Is there anyone in the room? Hearing none. Do we have anyone online? Okay. So we will close out public comment, and we will move to board member comments, starting with Mr. Furman.
Good evening. I'd like to first thank everyone who took the time out to make their voice heard in terms of public comment. We definitely hear your concerns, and we, we understand the hardship that you may be going through. We also, or I also thank all members of OCHN who either put presentations together or the, or the actual presenters tonight. Thanks for your hard work. Have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Furman. Dr. Hans?
I echo Adam's comments. Voices of the families and public is very important and helps us in continuing our efforts in advocacy on behalf of the community. Thank you.
Dr. Giles?
No comment. Thank you.
Pastor Jones?
I'm going to echo the thoughts of my partner down at the other end of this aisle. The comments that the, public comments that were heard tonight, the expressions by each one of those persons that spoke about where they were, you know, they spoke from their heart, and, you know, I know we as a board received it, I know I received it, and share in and felt what they were saying. And hopefully, they felt that we were listening to them. And so, to them, know that we feel it, you know, we're trying to work on it, we want it to be better. That's, that's number one. The other, the other piece is, you hear a lot of things in relation to the financials and what have you, and we try to make it as clear as we can, and I think when you hear someone else say something of how they're doing it or whatever, you know, test for clarity. Test, you know, do the fact test, testing on that, because that's very, very important. Know that it's not going unnoticed, and I think all of us are pushing it to the limits to make things better. So I thank them for what they said. I thank this, this, this board for the efforts and work that you do and, and the pushbacks, the pushbacks. And, and then I'd like to give a kudo to the, to our CEO. I'd like to do that, because over these last few months, you know, we, we needed a CFO, we needed a person, a human resource person, we needed a COO, and, you know, she accomplished that. And, you know, so I say to you, thank you, because, you know, trying to do your job plus the other four is not always easy. It's not always easy. But the idea now that you can, you can't sit back, I'm going to tell you that. But the idea now that you can say, okay, my team is almost there, and that's going to help us as we move forward and try to meet this crazy challenge that we have. So kudos to you for staying strong, okay? Solid in mind to make it happen, and, and I do welcome, you know, our new human resource person, and, and I called him Arby, not Arby's, but Arby. So, welcome to the wall. Thanks.
Ms. May?
No comment. Thank you.
Dr. Guadalupe?
I would just echo the sentiments. This is, I think, the first time I ever saw this room so full with people, and I pulled up in the parking lot, I was like, what is, what is happening tonight? And to those people, again, I, we, we hear what you're saying, it takes a lot to come out and share those thoughts and be vulnerable, and I hope we can, I look forward to hearing some response from our, our team here. I know that's diligently working to try and put all these pieces together. So thank you to the team and those that came out. Good night.
And I do want to thank the individuals who are coming out tonight and speaking. Knowing that everybody does not have the same information, the same level of understanding, and being able to have them express their viewpoints does help the Board of Directors in terms of when we have to make those hard decisions. So I appreciate everyone who came out tonight, even though some of the viewpoints may have been a little skewed. I, well, I do understand as a parent also of a child with disabilities, some, sometimes we look at our situation and think that every situation is the same. So I appreciate all of the viewpoints that were expressed on tonight, and hopefully we will be able to do a deeper dive on some of the things that are related to transportation, because that seemed to be the biggest issue at this time. And if there's nothing further, we stand adjourned.